Good evening and welcome everyone to our June ninth, two thousand twenty-five Disability Issue Advisory Board meeting. I am Stephanie Blackwell, Advisory Board Chair. Thank you for joining us this evening. For those who are able to observe the meeting, it's being recorded and you can access the PGCPS YouTube channel for viewing. Ms. Vickery, can you please do roll call?
Yes. Where am I talking? I go, okay. Ms. Amaya. Chair Blackwell.
Present.
Ms. Bowman.
Present.
Ms. Byrne. Ms. Byrne.
Present. Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay.
Ms. Dorsey.
Present.
Ms. Doyle.
Present.
Mr. Dwyer.
Present.
Mr. Jungle. Ms. Cattrall. Ms. Myers.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Present.
Ms. Patrick. Vice Chair Smith.
Present.
And, and I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I need Ms. Johnson to confirm that we are live because it states that we are in a practice session.
No, it might be your screen frozen. We have live on, I have live on my screen.
Okay. Okay, maybe my screen is open. Thank you.
No problem. Ms. Vickery, I am present. And Ms. Wingate Robinson. Okay. We have a quorum of ten with total present, ten total present.
Okay. Okay, with the quorum present, the disability advisory board will, meeting will come to order. To ask Ms. Smith, you have your hand up? On my hand. Okay, thank you. In adaption to June ninth meeting agenda, if there is no objection, the advisory board shall adapt the June ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda before, prior to the meeting? So we should move on. To two point two.
Chair, excuse me, if I may interrupt, you need to let, you need to state that there's been no objections. You see that line? Say that part that is.
Okay, if we have no objections, we should accept the agenda as written. Is there any objections? With no objections, we will move on. That was two point one, we move into two. Hold on one second. We are moving on to three point oh, approval of the minutes. Approval April eighth meeting minutes, if there's no corrections, if there's no corrections to the minute meetings for April eighth? Yes, Ms. Vickery.
Chair, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say it actually should be May, May twentieth.
May twentieth? Okay, my correction. Ms. Johnson?
No, I was gonna say the same thing.
Okay, I was just going by my, my notes, I'm sorry. Approval of them, I stand corrected, approval of May twentieth minute, meeting minutes. If there are, is there any corrections that need to be made to the agenda? Yes, Ms. Myers.
Hi, Madam Chair, thank you. I've read the minutes and was just a question about the list of attendees during the roll call. It does not include myself or Mr. Dwyer, and we were present at that meeting.
Okay, there should, that needs to be corrected within the minute meetings. Ms. Vickery. Ms. Vickery?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you? Ms. Myers, are you talking about the meeting minutes or are you talking about the roll call?
So, at part of the roll call is in the meeting minutes and it shows who the attendees were that were present during the roll call, who was absent, and Mr. Dwyer and myself are not reflected there. However, we are mentioned later on in the text.
Okay, if I'm, excuse me, Chair, may I?
Yes, Ms. Johnson.
So what would happen next is that the minute meetings will be amended and corrected and then the next board, wow, so the next board meeting is not, I'm not the board meeting. The next, well, advisory board meeting won't be until after the summer, in which case we would need to, you all would have to vote on the amended meeting minutes. So, but we will make sure to, to have you, Ms. Myers and Mr. Dwyer, reflected as attending the May twentieth DAP meeting.
Okay, Ms. Vickery, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I do, because I'm looking at the May twentieth meeting minutes from board docs and their names are there. So, yeah, I do have my hand up because of that, and I also opened up the May twentieth roll call and they're there. Ms. Myers, are you sure you're, you clicked the May twentieth and not the April eighth?
No, I read the ones that Ms. Johnson sent to us attached to the email.
Okay.
I think she means in the table on May twentieth, they're not listed, like the table at the top. However, are you seeing them there? Because I'm not.
I, I am, but I also went through it, I went through it through board docs. So I'm wondering if our internal document that was sent to us didn't have them, but I'm looking at it on my screen from board docs.
Got it, I'm looking at it from the email.
Okay, yeah, I'm not looking at it through the email, I'm looking at it from what's publicly available on board docs right now. That's how I match our agenda. And I see Board Member Brown is shaking her head, yes, that they are physically there for the public to view. So, I don't know what happened on what was emailed to us, because that's not what I'm looking at, but what the public can see, their names are listed, it is listed with our Chair, Vice Chair, myself, then it goes down to Ms. Bowman, Ms. Patrick, Ms. Payne, Ms. Byrne, Ms. Dorsey, Ms. Doyle, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Myers, Ms. Erica Wingate, and then Advisory Members absent, Ms. Amaya, Mr. Jungle, Ms. Cattrall, and then on the other side in the other column, Board Liaison Brown, and then Board of Education Office Staff President Tia Johnson, Ms. Johnson, excuse me. So that's what's publicly available. So, I don't want to amend something that's publicly correct.
Okay, if I can interject again, I, I, Ms. Vickery is correct, I do see Christopher Dwyer and Tanya Myers listed as being present at the meeting. But I think maybe where the issue came in, I'm looking at this under one point, this is under the May twentieth meeting minutes, under one point two roll call, I don't see either of their names listed, so maybe that's where the, the issue is coming in. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can amend that.
Yeah, and I might have, I, I know, I kind of think I know what I did with that was because we hadn't gotten to four point oh, but I can amend that, because we hadn't even recognized them as new members yet.
So you can admit.
So, so I can amend it if that's what we want to do. I think I have a question now around Robert rules of order and, and the documents, because if we didn't recognize them as new members until four point oh on the agenda, how is that, how would you guys like me to do that? Do we need to have a section underneath roll call where it says new members admitted to the advisory board on specific date? And we might have to, do we still have quorum? Our quorum is nine, because I see Vice, our Vice Chair just left.
Okay, she probably was having technical difficulties because her screen was frozen for a minute.
Okay, and what's our quorum number, Ms. Johnson? Is it nine?
It's nine.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five.
So you don't include Board Member Brown, she's not included.
Yep.
Nor myself.
Yep.
Yeah.
One.
So how?
We're still good to talk, sorry.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, how can we address that to have, do we need to make a statement to be able to amend that part, part where they not included, or?
Well, well, hold on, I still have my question.
Okay, go ahead.
To Ms. Johnson is, do I need to have a second, like, I don't want to call it a bullet, because it's not bullet, but do I need to have a second folded portion to say these were new members joining the board? Like, how is that done?
So, the, the, from what I recall from the last board meeting, they, during, both of their names were called during roll call.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
I mean, I understand your question, but because they were both called and they both responded present.
Okay.
I think it should be reflected, so we could just amend it, and then what would need to happen is the next board meet, the next DAP meeting, we can, the amended meetings minutes would have to be posted and again voted on without objection, if there isn't any other corrections that need to be made. So I would have to re-upload the amended meeting minutes, and it would need to be reflected in here that, that, that section, I guess is one point two roll call, you could put something about it being amended to include both of the new members as being present.
I got you, working on it right now.
Okay.
Um, so, under three point one versus being, so we having corrections to May twentieth minute meetings for that section, am I correct? So how would I address, okay, so there will be corrections on the minute means for May twentieth for two thousand twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay. So can I move forward to the report of the, um, report?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we moving from three point one on to four point one, four point, four point one. I hope everyone has had pleasant weekend. As a brief reminder, tonight's meeting marks the final session for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-five school year. In accordance with other regular scheduled DAP, we will resume meeting on the third Tuesday of each month at six P M. Beginning September sixteen, two thousand twenty-five. Ms. Johnson will be sending out a calendar invitation for next year and the near future. With that, we will now proceed to the next item on our agenda. Which is the report of the subcommittees. Um, I would recognize that advisory board subcommittees from their committee reports. I will, can I start with, Ms. Payne, can I start with you first, with, um, subcommittee on education?
On, yes, Chair Blackwell, for the Human Resources Committee.
Yeah.
So the committee took the feedback from the D I A B and incorporated it into our recommendation, and that recommendation was sent forward again today. Ms. Doyle sent that over today, and it should reflect all of the feedback that you gave to us. So that report is final now as written.
Okay. Um, can, Ms. Doyle, can you report out what was asked to be added to the committee or the wording of it where we addressed last meeting?
Hi, I can, there were, you want me to go through them all?
Um, yes, briefly, yes, please.
Um, okay, so the first thing we talked about was the dedicated aid position, there was some conversation about whether that was too fakey for the purpose of, of, you know, um, D I A B versus C CAC, we don't want to be stepping on C CAC's toes. We want to have it kept it as, um, I think it's important, um, and change in the language, so it's not trying to encroach on idea or faith or anything like that. Um, we talked about changing the dedicated aid position to a permanent position, considering making it a half or three quarter time permanent position, and that would make it benefits eligible. Um, and that's really the main changes within there. Um, we did name also that implementing this may require collaboration with C CAC. Um, not really any changes with the human resources, need to be more creative to hire new talent. Um, we talked about administrative procedures regarding reasonable accommodations. Um, within this, there's some changes that were recommended. We, we put some deadlines on this. Um, for the first six months, PGCPS must bring its response average back down to thirty days, and within nine months, they must bring its maximum down to thirty days. They need to produce quarterly reports as they are working to bring this down, and they also need to resume the annual reports that they are required to that already has, that's already in requirements, but it's not happening. We also named that principals need to be given autonomy as much as possible to implement reasonable accommodation changes while PGCPS is working to improve its response time. We didn't really have any changes to the social work bullet points. It kind of spoke for itself. Within the parent volunteer recommendation, we talked about how some of the logistics are complicated and um, the, the basic change we made is that there should be a backend type of streamlined process, so parents aren't walking around like with the receipt, like a paper receipt as the proof, there should be something that is, um, there should be an easy way for schools to talk with the county to find out who has, who has been fingerprinted and approved for volunteering. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Do anyone have any questions? They would like to ask Ms. Doyle and Ms. Payne? Um, Mr. Dwyer?
I'm Ms. Doyle, and thank you Chairman. Ms. Doyle, I took a lot of what you said with me out of the last May twentieth meeting, and I've spoken to some principals in District Five at a lot of the elementary schools that I've been interacting with recently, asking them about their volunteer policies and how they keep up with that. I know that Tulip Grove has a very robust volunteer program, and I spoke to their acting principal, and she told me they've actually assigned someone as the volunteer, leader of a volunteer committee that they have. I don't know if there's an emolument involved with that where they're paid extra, or if that's out of the goodness of her heart, but they do have a program in which there is a coordinator essentially helping to coordinate the volunteers. As for coordinating with second assignments to just maybe begin a conversation about increasing the pay rate or changing the dedicated aides to part-time, I did receive some clarity also from Ms. Myers that actually they have to request from Human Resources a dedicated aide for a student, and then a dedicated aide is assigned to that student. I think I misspoke or had a thought that they had to just apply for these temporary positions, but it's actually assigned to them by Human Resources, and Ms. Doyle, your, and everyone, your concerns are correct that a, a temporary employee does not really have the same benefits, they're the lowest part of the totem pole, and that's why it's hard to keep a dedicated aide. Today I spoke to another principal, and she mentioned that when a student is absent and they have a dedicated aide, they do not send that dedicated aide home. They find something else for that dedicated aide to do, whether it is helping other students or whether it is maybe even substituting, if that's something that's necessary within the school and needed during that time. So, it really just depends on the community of the school on how the dedicated aides are utilized, one, and there is an I E P that certainly says how they should be utilized for each student, and the same with the volunteers. It's really about the community, and I don't want to reiterate what I said back on May twentieth, but I, I feel like this was sort of kind of in my wheelhouse in a good way to sort of be able to step into this new role in the advisory board, but that's sort of some of the, some of the inside information that I received from some of the principals in District Five, so I just wanted to share some of that information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Ms. Bowman and then Ms. Vickery.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify for the, our dedicated aides, there is a list that's generated to principals, and it's the principals that does the interview process for the list of dedicated aides or temporary, temporary folks that is on the list, on the hiring list. And so H R does not screen, they do the pre-screening, but then there is a list that actually goes out to our schools for our principals to set up interviews, and it's ultimately the principal or their designated team that selects what's the best fit for the student's individual needs. So of course we provide temporary aides or dedicated aides for pretty much four different reasons, so depending on the best fit for the school, the student, etc., that's then, the principal will make that recommendation back to our Department of H R Operations and Staffing to continue the onboarding and hiring process. So I just wanted to make that distinction that they only just do the pre-screening, but it's actually the school that makes the final selection.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Ms. Vickery and then Ms. Doyle.
Um, I was gonna also advise Ms. Doyle that I had a chance to speak to some of the schools in my district as well, and they do too the same thing that Mr. Dwyer said, they have a person, but they use the, their administrative staff in the front office. But one thing that they did identify that would, might be a best practice is that they have a deadline for when parents or guardians or families need to complete their application. That way they're not waiting until the last minute at the end of the school year and, and trying to develop this list of volunteers. And in particular, um, one of the schools has like a cutoff in the middle of September or the end of, or even the middle of October to make sure that they have everything in, and it kind of gives the parents, you know, a little bit of gas in the tank to get it moving.
Thank you, Ms. Vickery. Oh, I'm sorry, you're still speaking.
I was just gonna say, I thought Ms. Doyle had reported that you guys were going to make a suggestion on getting schools that have best practices together, so that might be some of the schools that you might want to pull in, those, those ones that identify those practices.
Thanks, Ms. Vickery. Ms. Doyle and then Ms. Smith. Vice Chair Smith.
That was actually just what I was gonna say, it sounds like there's some schools that are doing some good things with volunteering, and that would, you know, it would make sense to have them kind of lead the way. I would also, I just wanted to touch on the dedicated aide a little bit more. Um, you know, we talked to somebody at a school where they're able to hire four dedicated aides and people like, whoa, how did you do that? Well, the vice principal got the list first thing and just like started making calls, and he had to make a hundred calls. Literally one hundred calls to hire four aides, and it still didn't cut, they actually needed six in the school. Um, you know, that's, that's a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of hours, and then, you know, I kind of just went over the changes that we've had since last month. I know last month we did talk about increasing wages. Just something I wanted to add in that conversation, I was kind of, I was looking on the website on the PGCPS job website to see the different vacancies, and again, our dedicated aides receive the state minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour, which is criminally low. You know, you can go work at McDonald's and make more and have an easier job, or you can work as dedicated aide. I think for a lot of people, the choice is obvious. Um, and there was also some kind of like janitorial position. Believe me, everybody deserves a good wage, livable wage for honest work. Um, but the temporary janitor was paid more than the dedicated aide, it was like fifteen fifty or fifteen seventy-five, and just thought, wow, we're paying people who deal with our garbage more than we're paying people who deal with our disabled children. Like, what are we saying about the priority that we're placing on our disabled children? We're, you know, we're not prioritizing them as high as we're prioritizing our garbage. Um, and that's a real problem. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Ms. Smith?
That was actually an excellent segue to what I was going to bring up. So I would just ask the question, and then my question might be for Ms. Bowman, unless someone else has an answer. I will, I'm interested in knowing who holds the authority to revise the requisition and the benefits that's offered specifically to this position. And, and the reason why I'm asking is, you know, we're making these recommendations to the Board of Education, but a part of me is wondering, is that the only group of people that this particular group needs to make this recommendation to? So I was just curious, who has the authority?
The way that I would, yeah, the way that I would answer that is I would first, I think that needs to go to our Chief of Human Resources. There's also, of course, a financial impact if you're looking at benefits, so our Chief of Finance, Chief Financial Officer, and probably the Executive Cabinet as a whole, but those are the two key people that I would say that this recommendation, of course, would need to go through is our Chief of Human Resources and our Chief Financial Officer. The other thing about our temporary staff, so I want everyone to know, not only do we have temporary dedicated aides, but there are temporary positions and other like supporting services and other divisions across the system, so temporary employees as a whole, they are located in different divisions across Prince George's County Public Schools. They're not just dedicated for students who have I E Ps, so I would say that our Chief of Human Resources would be the best person to be able to speak to it as we think about temporary employees across the system, and when they get raises or when they may be looked at to be viewed around as part of the budget process to make them a permanent position, if that's what's desired by leadership.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Bowman. We're gonna go back to Mr. Dwyer, then I have a question. For Ms. Payne.
Ms. Bowman, it was good to, and thank you Chair for recognizing me. Ms. Bowman, it was good to speak to you just before the meeting went live. It seems like you have a lot of sort of inside knowledge on, on the Human Resources with PGCPS, and I think that's, you know, a very valuable thing, especially in this situation, but you're, you're absolutely right. So I, I work at the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts with PGCPS. We have thirty-eight temporary employees, and they have different sort of job titles, and I believe that the pay rate, and Ms. Bowman, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is set by compensation and classification, which is with Human Resources, and maybe it is a discussion with them to at least start the conversation. We could, if we can't get them to be part-time employees by the start of F Y twenty-six, maybe we can get them up to eighteen, nineteen, twenty dollars an hour. Um, I think they're probably going through that process now, which, where they set those rates, and I think it's based a lot on precedence and what's been done in the past. So, you know, that could be something we could advocate for now as they're starting to, you know, I know that I've put in temporary employee requests over at my facility. They will evaluate them and they will set a pay rate based upon what it was last year, based upon if there was any changes to minimum wage or anything like that. So maybe there's a possibility to be able to request that there at least be a pay increase for these dedicated aides that do so much for our, our students.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Ms. Payne and then Ms. Vickery.
Yes, I, I just wanted to raise that our
Yes, I I just wanted to raise that um our committee did have with the Chief Human Resource Officer for Prince George's County Public Schools. Um, that was part of our data collection process uh because we wanted to understand what some of the um challenges were from her perspective. And in listening to her, um, some of the challenges that she mentioned, uh, we kind of incorporated into our thinking. So I want, I want the group to know that and to know that we were thinking just strategically, what are the issues that we want to bring forth to the board? So that if the board approves what we're suggesting and the dedicated aide is a position that the board feels is critical, um, then there would be more traction to be able to have meetings because the Chief Human Resource Officer also referred us to finance and to have a conversation with them. Um, we scheduled a meeting that hasn't happened yet. So I just wanted the group to understand our process and how we were thinking and trying to get this um issue raised as a really important one. Because we just felt, given the dedicated aide's position and the importance and the integration with our kids' IEP, it was a very important position to think differently about.
Thank you, Ms. Payne, um, Ms. Vickery and then Board Member Brown.
Well, you know, honestly, we can, we can um hold my question until after we finish this talk.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Brown.
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Blackwell. Uh, I just wanted to um encourage those who are on the call. Uh, last Monday, which is I think the second, um, the board uh had a au- the Audit Committee meeting. And the Chief Baldwin, who is the Chief of Human Resources, she talked about um the uh opportunities, I think areas of opportunities to make the HR process a little bit better. Uh, and so I just wanted to encourage you all to kind of take a look at that meeting. There was a presentation and she kind of broke it down a little bit more. Um, that way I think it will give you all a little bit more understanding as well over.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Brown. Um, I'd like to add to, um, as everyone has spoken, having a child who is a product of Prince George's County Public Schools, as a parent who won the one-on-one um a a dedicated aide for my son, it was a very tedious process. And what what happens is for a lot of parents like myself, that once you get a a good personal work with your child, then that person usually doesn't stay either because they doesn't have have benefits. So that is a daunting, daunting for us because um the services are needed and we still back at the same junction of years and years of asking for the same thing and never really getting a a fair answer to the parents who need those services. Because like I said, the aide that come, you have a good aide, you're like, okay, my, my child is okay. He's moving forward, he or she is moving forward. And then it'll come halt because the aide may leave to find another job. So um hopefully this time we can get a a a consensus for a better answer. Um, we're moving on, anybody else have any other questions or any other comments? And so we will move on to the next committee. Ms. um Bowman, can you co- um uh give us some information from your committee, please?
Yes, um, so the main update that I'll share is that we um have received our responses from our subjectmatic experts across the district, from the Department of Special Education, as well as our Department of Building Services and Facilities, as well as our Director of, in the Office of Alternative Infrastructure Planning and Development, as well as our Associate Superintendent for Supporting Services, who manages um the overall budget for Supporting Services. That does include the ADA um component. We also uh received responses from our Office of General Counsel on some questions that was raised, um, as well as our Director of Government or Affairs. Those responses have been um turned over to our Subcommittee, who is reviewing them. And then based on their review, there will be recommendations that will be made um from the review of those responses to determine if further research is needed. We do believe that based on some of the responses, we will need to do further research with our subject matter experts to be able to provide um recommendations back to the overall DAIB for review and feedback. So that's where we are with our Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I'd like to move on to Subcommittee that's working on Policy seventeen hundred. I think that was Ms. Patrick, um, Ms. Patrick is not here this evening. Anyone here from her committee can report on what's um what's the process you are walking on for Policy seventeen hundred?
Chair Blackwell, this is Teresa.
Okay.
I don't think we actually have an update. I wasn't, I I wasn't um aware that Ms. um, that our Chair would not be here this evening. But we in our last meeting, we reported out what our recommendations are. And I believe that the committee or the Advisory Board um voted for us to move forward with those. So we plan to include this information in the report that will be presented to the board at the end of the month. So there's not, there's, there's no update from this Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, with all other committees, ha- do anyone have any other questions? Uh, any of the committees that presented their information this evening? Ms. Vickery and then Ms. Smith.
Not a question about the committees, but um I I feel like there was um a statement in our last meeting where we tabled whether Ms. Myers and Mr. Dwyer were joining any Subcommittee's. And I just want to make sure that I have that um documented properly.
Okay, um, Ms. Johnson, can you answer that question for Ms. Vickery?
I'm sorry, what was the question again? Can you?
Ms. Vickery.
Whether Ms. Myers and Mr. Dwyer were joining um some of the Subcommittees and which Subcommittee's those were.
Um, I don't know, did, did you, was there, did they decide? I'm, I'm not really sure, what, how was it?
I don't think that anyone decided. I think that they asked for, to to come back to the board at a, at this meeting, I thought it was. And so I'm just trying to figure out if we have gotten to that time yet or if we're going to wait until the next school.
So I'm just wondering if it would make more sense at this point since, would it make more sense to wait until you come back after the break? Um, I guess that's something that would be up to the Chair. If uh she thinks they should be assigned right now or wait until um we start back up after the break again.
Yeah, my question was for, for Chair and Vice Chair.
Okay.
Okay, um, Ms. Smith, I'm gonna have you to answer that question. Since we, since we at the end of the school year, I mean.
So, um, these two individuals came in to fill a vacancy. Uh, I'm of the belief, let them dig right in. So, um, we can let them, yeah, we, I, I, well, I guess by now they are aware of the three Subcommittee's.
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm really sorry. I just wanted to make a, uh, Vice Chair, if I could just make a really quick point. So, um, you know, and I think that you make a great point as well. But I just wanted to, for situational awareness, just to make sure that whichever committee you all put them on that you don't exceed, uh, will meet the nine-person minimum because then you'll be in quorum. So we just have to make sure that there, that you all place them on a Subcommittee that, you know, doesn't, won't meet that nine-member um quorum.
So Ms. Johnson, don't get mad at me. Um, if, if I believe if, if it's the desire of their heart to be on there, then we just figure out a way to make it a public meeting if that's very, because this, this is really important work.
Yeah.
Um, I don't believe um any of the Subcommittee's are approaching for us to have quorum. But, but let's, we can all just work together to, you know, if, if, if it happens, um, fine.
Vice Chair, you're correct, we're nowhere near on any of the three Subcommittee's.
Okay.
Near quorum. Um, Board Policy seventeen hundred Committee has two, four, five. Um, New School Construction and Accessibility of Buildings has two, four, five. And Employment and Hiring has two, four and six.
Okay. Awesome. So, um, I, the likelihood of us doing any work during the summer may be slim to none. Um, so I don't think we have to wait. Um, they could, they could get assigned tonight. And then any material that the Board, that those groups have been working on, they can start reviewing it. And then um once we come back up in September, we just dive, they'll be able to just dive right in. That's, those are my thoughts.
Hmm, I'm in agreement too, thanks, Ms. Smith. Um, Mr. uh, Ms. Myers?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think in the last meeting, we talked about um us getting some kind of orientation and us being able to get access to the documents because we still didn't have those um so that we could get up to speed. Um, and so that was the only um stopgap measure is trying to understand what all you've been working on. You know, us having historical reference um information and the orientation so we know where to find stuff. Because I know Board Docs is supposed to work a certain way, but I think there were some things that weren't available to us as you all were transitioning to, I guess, a different platform. So that's kind of why we had not, or at least me, I'll speak for me. I had not yet raised my hand for a particular uh Subcommittee because I wanted to know what they were all doing. Um, try to review the information and then make a decision about which thing I I feel like I could help more with.
Okay.
Um, so Chair Blackwell, we, we definitely can get them access to the Google Drive. Um, Ms. Myers, um, I hate to say this, but there's not a lot of historical information that's available. We definitely can share the last report um that Ms. Johnson was able to pull up that came out of this board. Um, but any other documentation will just be of the work that the Subcommittee's have currently been um doing thus far. So we'll make sure um that the two of you are able to access the, the Google Drive. I think I said that in the last meeting, but by tonight, you will, you guys will have access. Uh, that, that's like, that should be an easy thing to get the.
Uh, Ms. Myers, did I answer your question? And you asked a question about orientation.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so Ms. Blackwell, um, I know that we don't have like no type of on, onboard and document or anything that's like formalized. So, um, I think you and I just need to get together and try to determine what that looks like. Um, this is not on the agenda, but I, I, I was planning on bringing this up um at the, the latter part of our agenda when we do like a roundtable. Uh, but maybe this might be a good opportunity.
Oh, but excuse me, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, uh, uh, I'm sorry. So if you wanted to um bring up something that's not on the agenda, can you possibly do it when we get to seven point O, which is new business? That way we're still in alignment with, that would be the, the time that you would bring up on the topic.
Chair, Chair Blackwell, we could share, um, we can um table my question until then so that we can back and finish fully discussing.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, and then Ms. Blackwell, I did have questions before we move to the next agenda item.
Okay, that would be under presentation.
Yeah, dealing with the presentations.
Okay. Um. Is it okay?
I would recognize Ms. Smith at this time about the presentation. Um. Not the presentations about, we was just wrapping up with the Subcommittee's status reports.
Yes.
So this is where, where I wanted to ask my question, um, although it aligns with the presentations. Um, I wanted to know if each Subcommittee would be willing to um provide talking points and any um data points that you all feel should be um pointed out when we do this presentation at the end of the month to the Board? So that um Chair Blackwell and myself are um properly representing the information that, that connects with the recommendations. Um, I know that you guys have been working hard in your sub-work groups. So definitely if you have data that, that some of us may not have been privy to, but it will help underscore whatever point that we need to make. If you could um consolidate that information and and get it over to us. Um, and then, so that was one question. Then the next question I think is for Ms. um Brown. Um, I know some of the Subcommittee's submitted data requests. I wanted to know, is there an update um as far as, you know, getting our hands on, on no, on those pieces of data?
I will check um the tracker that the Board members do have because I did submit your information to that. I have not personally received anything as of yet, but I will continue to look and give you all an update.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, um, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, um, I noticed my uh, our interim director Cindy Alian uh is here on the meeting. And I just wanted to just verify with her uh while you all were, uh, the Vice Chair mentioned the, the pre, um, excuse me, the end of the month, presentate the report out that you all were gonna make to the Board end of the month. And I just wanted to verify with her that the minutes um would be around, I guess, is it, do they have eight minutes, Cindy? I'm sorry, if I'm putting you on the spot here. Is she here? I don't know, she maybe stepped away. I know I sent an email, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I did see something that said eight minutes, but I, one of the follow-up questions that I had was, I know sometimes questions are asked. I don't know if questions would be asked to us. And if so, does that mean we need to consider that as we're preparing the presentation material? Like, does the presentation really need to be four minutes because we may have to deal with questions?
Mm-hmm. And that's a great question. Um, I can follow up, I know, I don't know if Cindy stepped away for a minute, but I could certainly follow up with her about that. Um, if this would just be just a report out and that's it, no questions? Or would there be a question um session followed after your report? But yeah, that's a really great question, I'm gonna note that for Cindy.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, I have a question for you. Um, or um Vice Chair, when is the date of the meeting, the pre, um, Board Meeting?
June twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth, it's seven PM is the open session.
Okay. Okay. Um, we'll move on to from fi- five point three. Do anyone have any questions or any comments about what was just mentioned? Go ahead, Ms. By, Brian.
Thank you. Um, just regarding the, the meeting on the twenty-sixth at seven PM, are we, um, are we all going to be there? Uh, and, and the Board Chair and Vice Chair are going to be presenting. Um, I'm happy to, to be there in support, cheerleader, whatever you want. Um, but I, I also don't want to miss it for lack of not knowing otherwise.
Um, Ms. Johnson, can you answer that?
Absolutely, I'll be, I'll be happy to answer, yes, absolutely. So the leadership will be presenting, so that would be the Chair and Vice Chair would, would be making the presentation. You are certainly welcome to still show up. Um, this is a public meeting, so the seven PM uh session um for the Board is a open session. So any member of the public can come, so you're certainly welcome. You and anyone else here is certainly welcome to to show up. But the actual presentation will be done by, by leadership, DAB leadership.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any comments or questions before I move on? Okay, with, uh, we're moving on to six point zero, the presentation. Um, I would recognize Ms. um Smith as she explained. Ms. Smith?
I didn't realize I was doing this at the item, so.
Yeah.
Um.
So, okay, as we've already alluded to, we have this presentation that's coming up on the twenty-sixth. Um, I know.
I'm sorry, Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I just have to, um, it's, I'm, I'm really sorry. So, um, Chair, uh.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if you're looking at the agenda, but this is, this presentation is supposed to be about the work plan for next year. Do you see that in your notes?
Yeah, I see that, that's a picture, okay.
And the reason why, uh, Vice Chair, I put you on there as, as, as doing the, um, I guess, kind of the explanation of this work plan is because I know you were there at our meeting, uh, the Chair. Um, at the time, unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it. So I figured that it may be a little easier for you to speak on it, if you don't mind.
Thank you. That's helpful, because presentation can be interpreted a couple of different ways. All, all right, guys. So, um, I met with um Ms. Brown as well as Ms. Johnson. So met with the Board of Education to talk about the work plan for DIAB for school year twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um, by policy right now, um, we have seven sessions, a minimum of seven. a minimum of seven sessions that we must um adhere to. So in those seven sessions, um, and in trying to keep it aligned with things that currently go on throughout the school year, we thought of topics that we thought would be of interest to the public and to the work of D I A B. Um, Ms. Ms. Johnson, I don't have it in front of me, but if you can, if you have it in front of you, could you list what those um subjects are for me?
I may be able to. I wonder if I can share my screen, yes.
I have it.
I'm sorry.
I have it.
Oh, okay, are you able to share?
Oh, no, I'm not able to share.
Okay, um, let me see if I'm able to share, if we're able, even capable of doing that, um.
Hopefully, we can.
Okay, I have it up. Let me see.
While Ms. Johnson pulls it up um for the public and for our board, just to be advised that I will embed the the document into our minutes as well.
Great, thank you.
It will be a clickable link.
And the other point that I think I need to make is that these are are um, these were suggestions. They may end up changing, um, but we just wanted to at least get something, get something out there so that, you know, it helps with being prior, you know, building our priorities and um being um connected to what's currently going on. So for September.
Is everyone able to see? I'm sorry, is everyone able to see it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Oh, at least I can. All right, so for September, once we return back, we figured that we will examine the goals um of each school, of each, you know, district, district that we're representing, um, as well as have a deep dive into um our policy discussion. We know that um Mr. Moss came to one of our meetings, but it was very brief. So we want to really take a deep dive into the policy, um, and then just examine the goals. We know that the Board of Education will be meeting, um, or at least having a retreat in the summertime. And I would assume a- out of that retreat, there are some priorities that's coming out of there, so how do we align to that? Um, and and keeping it in context with Board Policy seventeen hundred. Um, in October, um, to my knowledge, this policy will be on the tracker for next year. So although there are recommendations that we plan to present on the twenty-sixth, um, because this is going to be on the tracker, I think that this board as a whole needs to really look at Board Policy seventeen hundred and make sure that um, you know, if we if we have any information by October that we can take into consideration from our recommendations, that we are incorporating that information into this document so that um the Policy and Governance Committee can take this all into consideration. November, um, again, looking at the recommendations and seeing what can, what is going to move forward from the H R recommendations, um, and then we also still have the policy um on here. December, we had a discuss, a brief discussion about how we were going to be doing engagement. Um, I think that we need to take a deeper dive into that. What does that look like for our respective districts? Um, things of that sort, so put that in for December, January, um. Oh, and then what's going to be standing, standing, we will always have our subcommittee report outs. That's going to be a standing item. But for January, the Capital Improvement Plan, um, we we would like the representative um that's that's governing over that to come and present to us. Um, this, hopefully, some of the information that they have to share will align with what we're doing with one of our subcommittees. So we wanted to have a placeholder to get that person here to present. February, we want to start our discussions. We didn't, this group has not had any discussions as it relates to the budget. Um, and I felt that if we start early, um, looking at the budget, we can start to connect with the Board of Education, um, to get our thoughts in place on, you know, where we may need some revisions made, um, some adjustments made. I want to say revision, some adjustments. Um, and especially aligning with the concerns that we have for that dedicated, dedicated aid position. Um, by March, again, we want to still keep um our recommendations at the forefront of our mind. Um, so we will probably continue our discussion so that we'll have another report out eventually. And then we also would need to to, um, we don't need to do a reminder, but we put this out here to, for the public to have a reminder. The 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 Board of Education won't need a reminder, but the public, that um vacancies, that we will have to eventually post the applications for the vacancies connected to this group. Um, I know one of the recommendations that we have is that half of the group, I think is, I think the number is half. Half of this group um remains in place so that some of that knowledge can stay um as we continue to get, do the work, and then um the other half will will be leaving and be replaced by any um new district members. So we just wanted to make the 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 public aware that the vacancies would be soon, will soon to be announced. Um. In April, we said that we should talk about accessibility and inclusion. We would, we just need to have a discussion about that. And then June, we will be doing our annual report by, but by May, we want to try to fine tune any other information that we have gathered throughout that school year so that it can be incorporated into that final report. So, that's, that's all I have. Um, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Blackwell.
Okay, thank you. Um. There, um, are there any questions, anything that was presented by Vice Chair? Uh, the wor- what we're going to be working on for next school year? Uh, Ms. Payne, and then Ms. Vickery.
Um, yes, I'd just like to, um, uh, Vice Chair Smith, the thinking about following up on the recommendations, is that the recommendations that we're giving to the board in June, or are these different recommendations? If if you could just elaborate a little bit more on your thinking around that?
Sure, Ms. Payne, great question, and I think it's going to be a combination of the two. Um, because such such as with like the new construction subcommittee, we won't be, we won't have any recommendations right now because we're still um um doing our, conducting our research and gathering information. And based on what what the outcome is from there, we may end up having recommendations. So I think that this is just a a a work in progress um type of deal. Because we are going to present recommendations and before the end of this school year, we don't want that to die off, so we want to make sure that that discussion remains with the Board of Education as well as with administration. So some things that we are recommending may not be low-hanging fruit. It may be things that that um that require like long-term um action planning. So as such, the discussion may still be on the table. So my line of thinking is a combination of the two.
Ms. Vickery and then Ms. Dwyer? Mr. Mr. Dwyer, I'm sorry. Ms. Vickery?
Yeah, um, just a a quick question, and I guess this is more for Ms. Adeline and Ms. Johnson. Um, how long does, um, and maybe even Board Member Brown, you know? Um, how long does the um application process work? Um, I'm just like looking at the the work plan and wondering, um, how long does that take? Is that announcement, although it's just kind of an announcement from the Chair and Vice Chair in the the agenda, not necessarily something for the board itself to do? But just wondering on the back end, how long does that take for you guys? Um, because is March the appropriate time, or maybe is December the appropriate time? You know, like it just trying to plan out logistics and wondering that.
Really, I can answer this question, I I think I have it, so uh, the uh announcement went out in March. We chose somebody in April, and then we announced them in May, and then we're kind of announcing them again in June in front of uh the public and of course, um, the the board. Um, but I will say that uh Tia's, Tia and Ms. Adeline were very adamant that we went through over a hundred uh applications um at a swift manner. Um, and so that is, I think March is definitely inappropriate time, so that's that's just my feedback.
Okay, great. I was just wondering, like, do we push it back? Like, do we start, do you guys, should you guys start in January? Should we start, you know, teeing people up, like, you know, like letting the public know earlier? Or that's all, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dwyer?
Um, thank you, Chair. I I'm sort of, you know, taking all of this in, um, and I'm in the same boat as Ms. Myers, kind of new to, obviously new to to the board here. Um, I'm curious about, do we want to make a mo-? So I'm a twelve-month-year-old or a twelve-month um PG C P S employee. And when we flipped the fiscal year, which is coming up, that's actually when my work really like kind of explodes. So while a lot of teachers are winding down, I'm kind of gearing up. And I'm wondering if in this sort of transitional time, do we want to, uh, I would like to make a motion to see if we can get the temporary aides um rate changed to something a little bit better than what it is. Um, it may be just as simple as presenting something to compensation and classification and see if they are in agreement. Um, I don't know if it needs to go to finance. Um, I think they have a lot of power in determining who gets paid what. Um, and I would like to make a motion to at least see if they would be open to the idea of increasing the wage of a dedicated aide for F Y twenty-six.
I second that motion.
Ms. Myers?
You gotta beat me to it. You, but I I want to make a comment, um, I guess, after.
Yeah, hold on, hold on, Chair Blackwell, you have to ask if there's any seconds. Um, and then we go from there. And after Chair Blackwell does that, Mr. Dwyer, I might ask you to restate your motion, because I totally missed it.
Okay, um. Since the motion is on the floor from Mr. Dwyer, do anyone wants to second that motion?
Um. I'm speaking the motion. Well. Well. Yeah, I have a question.
Someone was speaking. Was that you, Ms. Vickery?
Yes, but Ms. Ms. Payne, is your question towards the motion that's on the floor?
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Payne.
Ms. Blackwell, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta state the motion and say that it's been seconded, and then it's.
Okay, the motion, the motion that was put to the floor by Mr. Dwyer and seconded by Ms. Smith has been.
Properly moved and seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. All right, is there any, any, any objections?
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion? Ms. Ma- um, Ms. Myers had her hand up, then Ms. Payne, and then Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, uh, I think the first thing is that um Madam Secretary needed Mr. Dwyer to repeat the message so she could capture it.
Not yet, not yet, Ms. Myers.
Okay, all right. So so my only comment to uh Mr. Dwyer, and I'm glad you brought this motion. Um, for the dedicated aides, for kids who have I E Ps, I guess, I I also want to know how, if this question hasn't been answered, how are they funded? Because I know that for kids who get like medical assistance or Medicaid, that um if the I E P states that they get a dedicated aide or a aide, that somehow it's funded, because I remember signing some stuff for Medicaid at some point. So I I'm trying to understand the funding stream. Um, and it may be an opportunity for us to say, hey, you're getting this money from Medicaid as well. Um, so it may not be fully on the the county to fully pay them a a better wage.
Um, I I'm going to ask this person, see if they can get clarification. Ms. Bowman, can you give a clarification to that is?
So I think, yeah, yeah, we need to consult with our Chief Financial Officer. It's not currently paid through Medicaid.
Thank you. I was going to also add, um, that the documents you most likely signed, and sorry for jumping in, but as someone who works for that system, um, without putting so much out there, um, the documents you signed were probably personal documents related directly to the health services that were needed for the child in your um guardianship or um or your biological child. Um, Medicaid does not work in that instance in the way that you are explaining it um with PG C P S and and some of the school districts in Maryland. It does, but it doesn't, and just, it's just not as simple and plain as you stated it. And so those documents you sign might just be specific for you and your family.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Vickery, Ms. Payne, and then Ms. Smith.
Uh, yeah, my question also was related to the budget. I wanted to understand the budget formulation and execution process, the timing, right? When does the county, um, you know, establish its budget? When is that budget approved, right? And so, um, understanding that, I think, might help us as we think about uh whether the motion can move forward or not, just based on the timing.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Payne. I'm going to refer this question to Board Member Brown. Can you give a little clarification on what Ms. Payne just stated?
When it comes to the budget? Of course, so um the County Council did come out with their budget. Um, and so we just received um how much we will be getting. We know what we proposed. And so, of course, in this last meeting is when we're going to possibly vote. Um, the the Chief Financial Officer will present all of this information to us. Um, and so this will be an opportunity for us to say yay, nay. Um, and of course, based on the recommendations of um H R, uh, we're going to be taking a look at pretty much everything, but um, yeah, stay tuned. But June twenty-sixth is definitely a meeting that you want to be a part of. But we do also have a business meeting. Do we still have the business meeting on the twelfth? Uh, Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry, maybe you can.
I'm sorry, yes, so the the business meeting, actually, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it's going to be a closed session.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, it's going to be, oh, well, it's going to open and then close.
Got it, okay. So, yeah, we'll most likely be discussing um that information as well. Uh, but typically, closed sessions are about personnel manner matters, and so that may come up. Uh, but definitely, for sure, the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Board Member Brown. Um, before I come to you, to you, Ms. Bowman, um, um, Ms. Smith, do you have something you wanted to add, because you did have your hand up?
Yeah, I put it down, because Ms. Brown just addressed, I just wanted to know that we have the County Council's um um, information about the budget yet, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bowman, and then Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a, I think it's either a comment that I want to make for the good of the group based on the motion as part of the discussion. And so if there's a recommendation that's going forward to to Prince George's County to look at the dedicated aide position being a part-time with benefits or benefited position, should we wait to give Prince George's County an opportunity to respond to that recommendation before a motion is on the floor? That's just for the for the group. I don't know if it's a statement or just a question for the good of the group. Like, we, I heard a recommendation that we make the position a permanent that's going back to the board, but we have not given them an opportunity to respond. So I was just wondering if we should wait to get that response first.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowman. Uh, Ms. Myers and then Ms. Vickery.
Yeah, just for clarity, um, about the dedicated aides, if Medicaid doesn't fund them, I think that's also something we should explore. Um, I did look at the forms that I signed, um, and they were for uh speech, for a social worker. But all of these positions I've signed a form for um at the end of the I E P. So either I'm misunderstanding it, or I'm misunderstanding the separate forms I got, but it was to apply Medicaid towards those services. And I think a dedicated aide would be one of those services. So maybe we need to look at that as well, as how do we get that funding? Because it funds other things for that child, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Myers. Um, Ms. Smith and Ms. Vickery, hold for one second. Ms. Bowman, can you give, you did get clarification regarding how the Medicaid forms are used?
So I was just clarifying that the dedicated aide budget does not come under Medicaid. We do fund Medicaid for speech and language services. Contractual contractual services is a big bulk of the money that we leverage for Medicaid. It does include speech and O T services. As far as dedicated aide services, or that pot of money is not used under Medicaid. So we would need to just go back to our Chief Financial Officer to clarify that funding source of of. of, of the budget that we use to fund. I know a portion of that would be general funds, but I'm not sure if there's a different or an additional funding source beyond general funds. So we just, we need to clarify that with our Chief Financial Officer.
Thanks, Ms. Bowman. Ms. Myers, did that clarify your answer how the Medicaid money is, um, how those services are paid through Medicaid? Assist for some of it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, it did.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, Ms. Vickery and then Ms. Smith.
So, uh, two, two things. One, um, so Maryland Medicaid does fund dedicated aides, but is through home health services. It is not within the school, um, like Ms. Bowman said. So again, that's why I was very specific around the documents that you have signed. They have been specifically for your family. Um, second, um, Ma- Maryland Medicaid does cover PTLT speech within the school. It is carved out of any of the managed care organizations within Maryland for anyone under the age of twenty-one. I was gonna actually go in line with Ms. Bowman's question around whether we should wait. It's my understanding that we had already made this agreement as an advisory board that we are already going to ask the Board of Education to look at this position as a three-quarter or half-time and increase the benefits. I'm just kind of wondering, as a board mem- as an advisory board member, are, why are we revisiting this? Or is this, is, isn't this part of a recommendation we're already presenting to them on the twenty-sixth? That we should be waiting to hear from them, um, under, that was presented to us by the Subcommittee for, um, Employment and Hiring? So I'm just, I'm just wondering why we have this motion? And then I'm ready to receive whatever information I need so that we can move forward with recording it. But I, I just think we're do- doing a duplication of work that we just did two or three weeks ago. And sorry, they're back home from swim.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Vickery. Um, Ms. Smith? Are you muted?
Oh, thank you. Uh, my, my feedback actually, um, sort of connects with what Ms. Bowman, um, presented to the floor, as well as what, um, Ms. Vickery is, is pointing out. So when I seconded the motion, I understood the motion to be that, um, it's specific to getting the rate changed. The recommendation is making the position more attractive, and, 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 and I can stand corrected if I'm understanding the recommendation incorrectly. But the recommendation is to make it more attractive and we're giving, we're presenting options to make it attractive. Whereas with this motion, it's specific to the rate. That's it. That's what we want them to start focusing on right now. And with the recommendation, they can choose whether or not they want to deal with the rate. They may find other ways to make it attractive. So I just wanted to, that's the point that I just wanted to make, in my thoughts of, um, supporting the, the motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Dwyer, hold on for one second. Ms. Doyle, you had your hand up?
I changed my mind.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of listening to what Ms. Vickery was saying, and, um, I wouldn't want to make this motion and potentially derail the work that's gone into making it a part-time or even a three-quarters time position, which it seems like it's going to be early fall when, um, that is sort of brought to the table. Um, however, the change of a rate, um, which I believe in this case is going to be through, uh, compensation and classification. It may not even need to go to the school board for a vote. I think it's going to be such a, a minute adjustment that they could either approve or deny it without it necessarily needing to, um, have a, have a, be, be discussed outside compensation and classification. I know that I've seen, in, as an example, I have a theater technician two that makes fifteen dollars an hour. So they, then they created a theater technician three that makes eighteen dollars an hour. So they've created these positions, uh, based upon the needs of my theater. So I'm wondering if in the same vein, they could make a dedicated aide position that say, if they're at fifteen now, maybe they make it at eighteen. But I think, um, to, to reach back at Ms. Vickery's point, the goal, the overall goal is to make it a more attractive position in the future. And if, for example, they change that rate to eighteen dollars an hour, I don't want them to think that's good enough for the next three years. Um, I want it to be good enough, I want it to be a stepping stone to something that could be that halftime with benefits, three-quarter time with benefits. So if the group believes that this motion could perhaps derail the work that you've all already put in, and I'm the new guy here, so that's definitely not something that I want to do. However, it could also be seen as a stepping stone to that halftime position or that three-quarter position. But I completely, uh, see what this Vickery is saying. And I just want to put out there, it may not be a drastic request to say, hey, can you bump this up maybe a dollar, dollar fifty? Because every dollar, dollar fifty is going to count for these people.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Ms. Vickery?
Um, I have a question back to Ms. Payne and Ms. Doyle. Do you, did you guys ever find out who owns the line item? Of dedicated aides? Who owns it? Who's, who's budget is it under?
Well, I, I was under the impression, Chanel, that you um, had responsibility. Yeah.
Ms.
So, thank you. So it is part of our maintenance of efforts, our overall budget for special education. Um, we are tasked looking at what we call maintenance of effort. So even our transportation services for students with disability all counts towards the overall maintenance of effort budget for the Department of Special Education. So those dedicated aides or temporary positions under the Special Ed, uh, Department are part of the overall maintenance of effort budget.
Okay, thank you for clarification for that. So do we want to keep the motion on the floor that has already been seconded, or to withdraw it?
You have to do a vote.
Okay, um.
Give me two seconds. Sorry, I got my voting sheet.
Thank you. Ms. Vickery, did you still need the motion repeated?
I do, but I still also need my voting sheet.
Ms. Bowman, you have your hand up?
All right, just to clarify, if we've already put this recommendation forward, that was through a previous vote, are we able to vote again?
Well.
On the same.
I'm sorry.
Recommendation.
Ms. Bowman, we didn't put the very specific part of, um, I believe Mr. Dwyer actually said, make it a, I, I'll need him to restate it, but we didn't. It's, because I have both minutes up at the same time. It's not exactly how he stated it tonight. Um, the minutes from, and the recommendations, um, that were put on at the last meeting was more so like, look at making this more attractive. Think about making this a quarter-time position. And if I understand his motion tonight is really like, no, make this a full-time position, or make it a halftime position, period. Like, i- i- it was more exploratory. Let me put it that way. That's the best way to explain it. It was like, you guys should explore this option. We, we think this is a great option. You should explore and think about. And if, and I'll have to have Mr. Dwyer, because I need it for the records purposes anyway, to restate the motion so I can make sure. But the way I'm hearing it is, it is actually different than just a, can you explore this for us, please?
Would you like me to repeat the motion?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna need that for record, but I have Ms., I'm gonna yield back to Chair Blackwell, because I see that we have some hands.
Yes. Ms. Payne, I'mma, I'm recognize you at this moment, please?
Yes, I, I just want to echo, uh, Ms. Vickery's. You know, our, our thinking was to, um, just raise the importance of the position, right? And encourage the county to think more deliberately about it. But I, I like the idea of being more specific in what we're asking. So, um, you know, that, that was not our approach, and I like Mr. Dwyer's um, approach in being stronger around what we're asking for. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Um, Ms. Vickery, are you ready for Mr. Dwyer to restate his motion? Mr. Dwyer?
Um, I would like to make a motion to request that compensation classification consider upping the hourly rate for dedicated aides, um, as a stepping stone to potentially creating a, either a part-time with benefits or a three-quarter time with benefits position, uh, for dedicated aides.
Brittany Patrick, second.
Ms. Vickery?
One second, I'm capturing a second.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I take shorthand, and then I go back and listen to the meeting. Okay, ready for roll call. Ms. Amaya. Ms. Blackwell.
Um, for, for.
I'm sorry, hold on. Chair Blackwell, you have to say the motion has been.
The motion.
improperly seconded. Um, discussion, having had discussion, we can go towards a vote.
Okay, um, the motion that Mr. Dwyer put to the floor has been seconded by Ms. Patrick. Um, we shall take a vote.
Ms. Black, Chair Blackwell.
Yes.
Ms. Bowman.
I'm gonna abstain.
Ms. Byrne.
Aye.
Ms. Dorsey. Sorry, say that again, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Jungle? Ms. Cottrell? Ms. Myers? Ms. Myers? Ms. Myers?
I'm here, sorry. Can you repeat that for me?
We're, we're waiting for your vote on the motion from Mr. Dwyer.
I agree.
Ms. Patrick?
Aye.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Vickery?
Aye.
And Ms. Wingate Robinson? And she is absent today. We have a total of nine in affirmative, one abstention, and four absence. The motion has carried.
With that said, um, any que-
I'm sorry, Chair Blackwell, I need to update that for the record to make sure I'm correct. I have, the motion carry with a vote of ten. You know, there were one abstention and four absence. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, Chair, um, I just kind of just want to make sure I get us back on track. So we were under, we're on six-point O on the presentations, which was the, the, uh, work plan for school year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. So I just want to make sure, um, I guess if you all are finished your discussion, um, the next part would be you to state that if there are no corrections to the topics that are coming up for the next school year, then you could say, um, that the, um, the work plan has been approved.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that we're still in alignment with, that's where we're going with the meeting, to make sure that, because it has to, because, I'm sorry, if I could just kind of explain briefly. So once it's approved here in the app, the work plan is going to move forward to the full Board of Education, and, um, and they're gonna, along with the other committees, they're gonna, um, approve it in, at their August meeting.
Okay, thank you. So with no objections, that we agree as a subcommittee, we move forward with the work plan for school year twenty-five, twenty-six? Ms. Smith?
I, I guess, from my own edification, if we move forward with this, is there still opportunity to make revisions throughout the school year? Like, these topic areas, like, let's say, hypothetically, something else is brewing that month, and we really need to discuss it as a board. Does our agenda, we create our agenda for each meeting, does that control the discussions that's being, um, discussed?
So sometime, I'm sorry.
Uh, I was gonna ask you a question, Ms. Johnson. Um, with, um, can it be, um, approved with, once it's approved by the board, can we be able to go back to make any corrections or to add to that work, work agenda for the year?
Um, I believe you can. Let me see if Cindy, if she's, um, available at this time. Cindy, are you, oh, there she is. I'm not sure if you caught the question from Chair Blackwell about the work plan that once is approved by the board, by the full board. Um, are they able to amend it throughout the year? Or, um, is that, or they have to stick with what we, what, what they came up with the topics?
No, so the, um, the work plan, and I would advise you put that in the bottom of your, of the work plan, is that this is a non-binding document.
Okay.
Allow you to change it throughout the year without any legal issues.
Okay. So, um, Ms. Johnson or Cindy, if, okay, once we agree to approve it and we put this at the bottom, we can change throughout the year if we need to add, and add anything we need to work on.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Um, Johnson, so when I make the motion to, as a subcommittee, we agree, we all in agreement to the work, to the work, um, schedule for next school year for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six? Um, we will approve it with, um, not being binded to.
You can approve it, so you could approve it with the, uh, we're gonna add that this is a non-binding, the work plan is non-binding, uh, and you can say that we'll approve it with that. Um, I guess there'll be amended or correction
Okay.
to the, to the work plan.
Okay, I just want to know the language. Um, as the chip, uh, as the subcommittee approves the work schedule for school year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six will be approved with no binding or make, or to have corrections made when necessary. Am I correct?
So, Chair, I'm sorry. So you could say, um, show the advisory board approved the amended DAP work plan for SY twenty-five, twenty-six to include the non-binding language, or something to that effect.
Okay.
And then without objections, it's approved. The amended work plan is approved.
Okay. Um, does, DDAP will approve the working schedule for school year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six with no binding language within the work, the work schedule for the school year. If in agreement, is the committee in agreement, um, do we need to take a vote, or do we need to say, how do we answer that?
I'm sorry. So you could say, um, show the advisory board approved the amended DAP work plan for SY twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-twenty-six with the non-binding, um, for it to be a non-binding work plan, I should say. So you can say the question is, so the advisory board approved the amended DAP work plan as non-binding for the, for SY twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. I don't know if you want to write that down.
Yeah, I'm gonna write that down. That's a lot. Okay, go ahead again.
So you can say the question is, show the advisory board approved the amended DAP work plan.
Hold on, approve amended?
DAP work plan.
EDAP, DAP, work plan.
As non-binding.
As non-binding, okay.
SY twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, got it. Okay, the advisory board will approve the DDAP work.
I'm sorry, Chair, you have to ask us a question. Shell, you always start off as Shell.
Okay.
Shell the advisory board, then.
Shell the advisory board approve, um, should the advisory board approve uh, amended DDAP work plan for non-binding for school year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six? Are there any questions? Are there any other comments? All in favor?
Then you could say, without objection, the amended DAB work plan for SY twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six is approved.
Okay. If there's no objections to approve the work plan for SY twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, it shall, it shall be approved. Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, we are moving on to new business. Seven point zero new business. Um, Ms., uh, Smith, you, this is, you said you had some, something to add to new business.
Yes, so, um, DAB has, um, new members. And with the re-establishment of this board, I think that it will be a great opportunity for us to have a retreat. And I would like to know. Yeah, I guess the question is, can, can DAB have a retreat before the start of the twenty twenty five, twenty six school year? And maybe the question is to Ms. Byrne. Board Member Brown?
Yes, um, I was actually gonna turn it to, um, the board staff, but, um, because I know we have our retreat and once, I think, board members are out for the count, I like to call it, from like June twenty sixth, uh, maybe until August eighteenth, um, to your, uh, excuse me, uh, Ms. Johnson or Ms. Adeline might be able to tell me the exact dates. Um, so, I'm not opposed to it. Uh, but what I will say is, from what I've heard in, in, in the past, um, board members are not typically off, even though they're supposed to be off. Um, and so, I would have to look because now this is, we're getting to, uh, kind of like the end of the year, and this is probably something we should have went before. But I understand now that we have new board members, this is something we can definitely plan for. Um, when were you trying to do it, Teresa? Were you trying to do it in June? Like, give me some dates that you were looking at. Trying to do it before school started?
I was thinking before school starts.
Okay, okay.
I'm not, let me say this, I'm not stuck on whether it happens before school starts. If we have to push it out, it's fine. I just, I, for me, I would like to see us get together, um, so that we can strategically plan and get to know one another, have some of that, um, team building exercises, things of that sort. Um, and if, if the summertime is not the appropriate time right now, I mean, fine, but.
Right.
So, we at least work towards doing it.
No, I, I do like the idea and I do think it's important, especially for this work. Um, so let me look at some dates and then I can get in contact with you and, and Chair Blackwell to figure out what's the best time to do so.
And then if we need to submit, I, I know we, we're thinking about this with PCAC and we're gonna be working on a proposal, but if this body needs to, um, develop a proposal, that's just something we will need to know so that we can work towards, you know, getting all of that documentation together.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Ms. Smith, and thanks, um, Board Member Brown. Ms. Johnson?
Uh, so, I just wanted to remind everyone that, much like with the Board of Education, this may have to be an open meeting, um, if you're gonna do a retreat. Because if the quorum of non is met, it's gonna, per the Maryland Open Meetings Act, this will have to be open to the public. They would have to, they would have to be noticed. So, it's just something to keep in mind, um, that we, it would have to be, um, yeah, notice will have to go out to the public that you are, are doing a retreat. So, um, that's just something to keep in mind. And I'm gonna also speak with Cindy too about this, just to see how this will look as well, um. So, just to make sure that we're, we're, we're in alignment with the policies and, you know, and, and how, again, how, how this will look. Um, as far as how you want to do it, where you want to have it, all that, you know, logistics wise. So, I think that a meeting definitely would have to take place, I think, with, uh, leadership and Board, uh, Board Member Brown, as well as, uh, Board Staff, Board Office Staff, myself, maybe even Cindy.
Okay. Um, is there any other new business? With that being said, um, are we in agree, uh, go ahead, Ms. Vickery.
Yeah, I think Ms. Vickery had an item.
Go ahead, Ms. Vickery.
Yeah, I was coming back to the subcommittee, sorry, and I couldn't get my hand up in time. I was over here moving the minutes around. Uh, but we had tabled the subcommittees and whether or not, um, Ms. Myers and Mr. Dwyer were going to join subcommittees tonight or if they were placed on the committees. So, I was just breaking that topic background.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vickery, for the reminder. Um, I, um, Mr. Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Ms. Myers and Mr. Dwyer. We had three subcommittees. Um, my question is, do you have any subcommittees that you would like to be part of? Which we have, um, the hiring and employment. We have Ms. Bowman, who's over the subcommittee for, um, uh, accessibility and construction. And we have the other subcommittee for seventeen hundred policy. Um, just want to get your interest. Mr. Dwyer?
Um, thank you, Chair. I think just with the, the motion that I put to the floor, it seems logical to me that I should maybe slide into hiring and employment if hiring employment will have me.
Ms. Payne, you are the chairperson for that committee?
Absolutely will have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Dwyer. Ms. Myers, um, do you have a committee that you have some interest in that you would like to be a part of?
Oh, of course, the hiring one. Um, seventeen hundred committee, I'd like more information about it, about wha- what they've done so far in the last year or the last six months to get a better idea of where they are. Um, but preference wise, the same one Mr. Dwyer is talking about because I'm passionate about making sure students have the support that they need, um, inside the classroom.
Okay, Ms. Vickery, um, will the number still be good for that committee?
You know, that's what I was going back to double check.
Yes.
Here we go.
We can't have more than, what, eight?
No, I don't want us to think like that. I mean, we can, we just have to work. If it goes, if we have quorum, we just have to make sure that we do a public meeting. I really don't want, I, I don't want that to be a barrier for people participating.
Vice Chair Smith, Vice Chair Smith, you're okay? If, if the two, if Ms. Dwyer and, uh, Mr. Dwyer, excuse me, and Ms. Myers, um, you guys have rhyming names similar, um, because you guys both have the Y E Rs in. Um, if they want to join unemployment and hiring, though, it makes eight. We couldn't have anybody else join.
Ms. Dole? I'm on the HR and employment and I would just say, uh, there's usually somebody who can't show to a meeting, so even if it did bring us to nine, um, you know, we're all busy, parents and community members here, bring it. Let's have more people.
It's okay, we won't even make it to nine. I'm, I'm the one person on the board that's not on that committee, not even trying to join. I love you guys. Good luck and God bless, but no, thank you, okay? I'm gonna stay with my buildings and my elevators, Ms. Bowman. Nope, you know how I feel about them elevators. And I'm gonna stay with my people over in BP seventeen hundred and we're gonna get the policy words right. But not, y'all, y'all, okay, y'all not gonna make quorum, I'm not gonna ever be here.
Um, Ms. Myers, your hand is up.
So, so that's my next question. So, the seventeen hundred policy one, I mean, is that some, can we do both? Or are we just relegated to one? How's that? Can we do more than one? I have to leave that for Chair Blackwell and Vice Chair Smith, but we didn't have any parameters beforehand. Um, so I would assume that they would let us still be the same and those two committees are nowhere near the number seven or eight. Um, so they do have availability, Chair Blackwell and Vice Chair Smith.
Yeah, all we, all we said in the past, you know, whatever, you, you know what your capacity is better than anybody else. My thing would just be if, then this is for any member, if you sign up for a committee, that's what you're committing to. So, um, just know what your capacity is. And then, um, Ms. Patrick is, I think Ms. Patrick is here.
Yes.
Ms. Patrick, Ms. Blackwell, if you're okay with this, um, could Ms. Patrick just give an overview?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Patrick, can you please give a overview of policy seventeen hundred?
Sure, um, so board policy seven hun- seventeen hundred is the policy that establishes DIAB um, and provides the charge for the work of the DIAB, so what we're supposed to focus on. We've met a few times before to review the policy. Um, and I would definitely direct all to the video recording of, um, our previous meeting last month where we overviewed the preliminary recommendations that we've come to thus far. Um, but we, uh, essentially are interested in having the board to revisit this policy to, um, expand and or clarify the scope uh, in order to encompass all, uh, disability-related federal laws. Um, so that's just kind of a summary, but I think you can really see the work that we've done in our, in the video recording of the previous DIAB meeting.
Ms. Myers?
Oh, I thought I lost you there for, I'm, I'm having bad connectivity problems.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I think, I think what I'd like to have is access to the, um, documents, just so I can read, um, and see, you know, how I may be of assistance. Um, but definitely leaning more towards the hiring, um, committee.
Okay, is that the committee that you would like to be, um, on at this present time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vickery?
Yeah, I just want to state for the public, I realize that, um, as I was making the minutes, that we were talking about quorum, uh, and I'm just doing this for the public to just state that, you know, we are not trying to subvert having any type of public meeting. It is just, everybody needs to have to work, so it's easier to have subcommittees that have less quorum so that sometimes we can have a seven AM Saturday meeting. Um, and, and I'm just stating this for the public so that they understand that sometimes we're on these meetings at ten PM at night or we're on these subcommittees at seven o'clock in the morning with kids yelling in the background, driving to dance class. Or, um, as all my other advisory board members know, I take phone calls from the car, from the parking lot, um, outside of Sark and Bach Road. So, um, we are, we are not, um, trying to keep the numbers in a way for anything else. It's, it's just that we know that without a public meeting, um, we can sometimes meet faster as four people or three people to just kind of download the information we may have learned from a department in PGCPS, um, to come back and report at our public meeting once a month, um, so that the public can find out what we did learn in those past three weeks. Thank you, Chair, for recognizing me.
Uh-huh, thank you, Ms. Vickery, for, um, giving clarification for the public to understand. Um, do anyone have anything else they would like to bring up as new business that can be discussed this evening?
Chair Blackwell?
Yes, um, Ms. Smith.
And maybe Ms. Johnson, I don't, cannot remember, maybe I need a refresher. Um, do we need a decision as far as our frequency, not the frequency, um, the time that we will meet next year, like, what will be our reoccurring meeting? Do we need to, um, bring that up tonight? Have we already addressed this?
So, from my understanding, in the Chair's report, I think, um, Chair Blackwell may have mentioned it because that was information that was in her report. Um, she may have mentioned about, I think she did mention it the third Tuesday of each month at six PM.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm, I was having some connectivity issues earlier. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Vick, Ms. Vickery.
You're welcome.
For your clarification.
And yes, that's that next meeting, um, for everyone, so get your handy dandy calendars out, that's September sixteen, from the minutes.
And just again, just to remind everyone, I will send out, um, calendar invitations to everyone soon with that information.
Okay, is it any other new business for, um, the subcommittee, for the committee this evening? With that being said, if we are in agreement for adjourned this evening, um, that's seven point one. As the Chair, I like to, would like to inform the public that the next meeting, virtual meeting of the disability issue advisory board is scheduled for September sixteenth, two thousand twenty five. Please continue to visit Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting details and updates. Ms. Vickery?
I'm so sorry, Chair, can you start again? Um, adjournment is actually, um, subject eight.
Subject eight? Oh, I'm sorry, you're, I stand corrected, thank you. Um, adjournment is eight point eight, I stand corrected, thank you so much. Um, as I have, um, as the Chair, our next meeting will be September sixteenth, two thousand twenty five. Please continue to visit Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting details and updates. Um, at this time, the meeting will be adjourned. Thank you all for your valuable contribution and consistent attendance throughout the year. To our viewers, thank you for watching and for your continued support. I wish everyone a safe and enjoyable summer and I look forward to continuing to do that important work after the break. Um, there being no further business. The time now is eight oh one and June ninth, two thousand twenty five, meeting of the disability advisory board hereby is adjourned.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, and thanks to public. Thank you.